The addition of the Board of Selectmen meeting for February 22nd, all selectmen are present. First, we have a scheduled hearing, Washington Street, Cosland Way, street public layout. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, as you've stated, a road acceptance hearing this evening, which we are required to do. The board is required to do the layout. Jesse Stein is here representing the planning board. The planning board has already held their hearing on the proposal. I'm not sure whether Mr. Stein wants to just kind of give us a quick recap as to what the planning board has already done on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. Jesse Stein from the planning board. So, on February 5th, we voted to support acceptance of Washington Street and Cosland Drive. The town planner conducted a couple of onsite visits. Our consultant, Fussin O'Neal, also conducted onsite visits. The road is in good condition. The conditions that our consultant had for light bases to be installed, a pedestrian crossing sign to be installed, and catch basins to have separater hood installation, all of those have been met by the proponent. And there's been an agreement with our DPW and the proponent on the snow plowing. Covering the cost of that is going to be absorbed by Dell. And the new light poles are also going to be maintained and paid for by Dell. So, to me, it's satisfactory to us on the planning board, and we voted as such.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stein?
Not for me.
So, you need a motion from us, I assume, to approve the road?
To lay out the road.
The layout?
The layout of the road.
Close the hearing first. So, we will, seeing no questions, we will close the hearing. Well, actually, we're not quite yet. Sorry. Please. Did no... You want to speak?
It's okay. I just wanted to... Dan Feeney from Bales &amp; Thomas, the civil engineers for the project, worked with Dell EMC throughout the project. I believe everything is complete in your package. The one thing that wasn't submitted was the road acceptance fee check, which I have. So, before we just close the public hearing, I can deliver it to whoever you want.
Thank you.
So, EMC had mailed the check last week, but it comes from someplace. It's not from Hawkington. It's from someplace else. And it hadn't arrived. And so, I had told Paul that I would bring the check if it didn't arrive today, and we were told it didn't arrive. So, just wanted to clean that up.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else? So, we shall close the hearing then. So, any particular wording needed, or we just...
There's a motion to lay out Washington Street, Cosland Way as presented.
Kalenda moves? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Stein.
So, you'll need to sign the miles. We can save that until after the meeting. And then, obviously, this issue will go to town meeting. If the town approves this, then the road will become a public way at that point.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Stein, gratuitous that you're there. You're next. An update. CHOPS E. Membership and Recruiting, sir.
So, I wanted to take the opportunity to basically use this forum to appeal to the public. We have three at-large membership opportunities on CHOPS E., which is the Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee. Mr. Shifrin recently served as our chair. I am the vice chair. Ms. Faniff is also a member. She's the Board of Selectmen delegate. I'm the planning board delegate. We currently have one at-large member. We recently had a resignation. So, at the moment, CHOPS E. does not have a quorum. And this is an issue because there are some important items within our purview, such as the over-55 bylaw. That was deemed to be illegal by town council. We went over that at the last town meeting. The bylaw currently states that the property must be owned by a nonprofit, and that is inherently not legal. We at the planning board have been discussing this, and we would like to honor the original intent of the bylaw, which was realistically affordability for the over-55 segment in the community. So, that would be a role CHOPS E. could play, is working with the planning board to formulate the correct legal language, again, to preserve that spirit of affordable housing for the 55-plus group. Also, we are currently at eight-and-a-half percent affordable housing as a town, which means that we are currently open to the 40B development issue. And this, in my mind, would warrant taking a proactive approach, and that's the role that CHOPS E. could play, looking at ways to use the resource that we have, which are considerable in our housing, affordable housing trust funds, and basically coming up with some plans to meet that 10% threshold without having to let the developers come to us. Finally, the housing production plan that we adopted as a town basically outlines in detail the benefits of a diverse housing and economic profile. So, I feel that CHOPS E. has an important role to play. Again, we have three open slots for at-large membership, and I'm appealing to the public to please apply. I would make myself available to ask and answer any questions. I can be contacted through the town planner, who can also, as ex officio, address the questions of the public.
Excellent. Yes?
Jesse, thank you for the update. Has anyone on the planning boards spoke with the director or the membership of the housing authority? I know I had...
Yes, I went last night.
...got a two-month period, and I got nowhere.
I did attend the Southborough Housing Authority meeting last night. Two of the members expressed the sentiment that they'd already served on CHOPS E. and were not interested. And there's one member whose term is about to lapse. She's not going to renew on the housing authority. So, the housing authority actually has some membership issues of its own. So, at this point, although the housing authority is, you know...
It's spelled out.
Correct. But that's not what I'm here tonight to pursue.
No, I understand. I asked the question to see if we could meet, not to fill every slot. Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I did. And at this time, that's not what I'm counting on, to meet the quorum.
I just want to follow up. If you don't step forward, these housing projects are going to be outside the scope of neighborhoods getting involved at the very earliest point, and recommendations from citizens in the community to the planning board, to the ZBA, to this board, to the trust fund committee. So, it's really imperative.
So, one last comment, Mr. Chairman. If you, if anyone here knows anyone who is interested in dabbling in town government, this is a great way to start. So...
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Mr. Malonowski, update on Public Safety Building Committee, sir.
Can I ask a question relative to that? If the problem continues, can we make it a three-person committee?
Purple, do you know the answer to that?
I don't know the answer to that. It's whether you can change the constituency of that, but I can look into it. Just so, since you brought that up, I'll take the opportunity. I was going to say something on my report, but we have the cable committee. We have our three cable contracts coming up for renegotiations, and we don't have enough people to serve. That's quickly going to become an issue because we have a three-year stretch, I think, beginning in '19, where we have to get those contracts done, '19, '20, '21. So, I'll make the same plea Mr. Stein did, you know, that for people for the cable committee, you know, we do hire a specialized lawyer to work with the committee through the negotiation process, to bring something back to the Board of Selectmen, recommend it back to the board to, for approval for these contracts. But it is important. It is something we need. So, but I can look up the constituency, see if there is a way to change that.
Okay. How many do we have and need for cable?
We need three. We can't make it any smaller. So, you know, we've had a little bit of interest here and there, but we really need, we need three people. So, anyone that you can think of bringing forward, putting in, submitting a form would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Malonowski.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So, this is our last update before we go out to bid. We go out to bid next week, starting on the 28th, and I'll walk through the schedule with you in a couple of minutes because I think that's crucial to the success of the project. But few things cost-related. We did our final cost estimate last week based on substantially complete construction documents, and we are estimating that if all the bids came in exactly at the cost estimate, which is not the expectation, we would be using approximately $325,000 out of the over-$2 million contingency that was approved for the project. So, that gives us at least $1.7 million of unforeseen issues coming up on the project without going over budget. So, we are very optimistic that that number will be zero or less than zero once the bids come in. We obviously don't know until you get the bids, but, you know, based on all the professional advice that we are getting, we think that's a favorable direction that we're headed. You'll remember, last time I was here, it was about $200,000. The only difference, really, is not scope of the project. It is they think there's an increased demand for electricians currently, and they saw the pricing going up on the electrical side. So, that's the only change. As part of that, we had to identify the, what we call bid alternates, that we're going to lay out in the bid packages. This is where our committee kind of goes a little bit beyond where our charge goes, but I think we're trying to help bring this all together. So, the way that we have instructed our consultants to draft the documents is we're going to have three bid alternatives. Bid alternative number one is going to be for essentially the articles that CPC has now approved to bring forward to town meeting warrant article related to the retaining wall and parking lot for the golf course. Remember, that's on the parcel of land for the public safety building, and we're obviously trying to get contiguous, right, and synergies on the project. So, that's bid alternative number one. Bid alternative number two is actual rehooking up and doing everything that the clubhouse needs to do to get back online. That's a separate town meeting warrant article, and I'll go through the logic of why those are separate in a second. And then, bid alternative number three is the police cruiser canopies that, you'll recall, the last time I briefed you, we had pulled out of the scope of our project due to the size of them, approximately $300,000 plus. In addition, the fire chief pulled out altogether, not even to be included as a bid alternate, almost another $150,000 for the canopies to cover his trailers. So, we thought it was important to keep that in there. Now, there's a catch, and it's actually a good catch for once. We think we have found a potential to fund that without taxpayer dollars. We have been advised by our owner's project manager, and Steve Theron's here representing Vertex, and if you have technical questions, that we should be able to go out and do an RFP. So, one of the things I'm going to be asking you to do is to authorize Mr. Purple to work, to issue an RFP, to basically make those canopies solar. And the way that they get funded is the company that installs the solar is going to be, obviously, driving electricity off of that. They would pay for 100% of the construction. In addition, there is a potential income stream back to the town over a period, depending upon the RFP works out. So, in my personal view, it's an incredible opportunity. There's absolutely no strings attached to at least go out and see if we get that response. The expectation, based on the recent tax bill and the incentives that are out there to do this sort of work, is that there would be a very favorable response to that RFP, and it would then take it completely out of the scope of our project, such that, let's just say, the bids come in about $1 million under, which is dream large, right? We don't even have to think about adding this alternative back in for the solar canopies, and it allows us to give the police chief everything he asked for at absolutely no cost to the town. So, request number one from all of you tonight would be that you make some sort of motion to authorize the town administrator to pursue that option, you know, suffice that your questions get answered appropriately tonight, so that we can have responses to the RFP by the time we get to bid response day, which is next part of mine. We have asked bid responses to be due by April 4th, which is five days before town meeting. Sometimes there's hiccups. You have a delay here or there. You know, newspaper doesn't post the ad appropriately, et cetera. So, we're giving ourselves about five days of wiggle room to actually know what this thing's going to cost us without change orders, including these alternates by town meeting. There's some vetting that needs to go on from an insurance perspective, and just making sure there's no new lawsuits against the general contractor, et cetera, that have come up since we've pre-qualified. But overall, what we're anticipating from a scheduled perspective is town meeting would either fund or not fund, alternative one. They'll either fund or not fund, alternative two, so that then the Public Safety Building Committee, in conjunction with you, can award a contract according to the votes of town meeting. Obviously, the base bid, we already have funding for that unless we have a major hiccup that no one is expecting. So, that is essentially where we're at. I think the important thing that I'm also going to ask you, which I'm not sure is really a motionable thing, but just something to put on your calendars, is we're going to need you to award the contract, and we need it awarded, like, pretty much right away, so that we can start the phasing that is going to occur to make the golf course operational and to tie in the Woodward septic system, right? There's a lot of interlying parts. Every day, every week counts. So, your meeting, if you go based on your planned schedule, would be on Tuesday, April 17th. All I ask is, that is school vacation week. So, if you do have conflicts and don't have a quorum, that you try to meet at the end of the week before that, so that we can award this bid. It's also my understanding that Ms. Galligan will be coming to with a bid to award the same evening related to extending the town's water line, which is part of our project to actually service the building. That work has to be all kind of awarded in and around the same time. So, that's where we stand. We're very optimistic on where we stand. We had 11 general contractors pre-qualify and over 90 subcontractors. So, that means if all those 11 apply, competitive forces should hopefully lead us to a good answer for the town. There was a lot of work to pre-qualify, and kudos to, we had some subcommittee members that did that, as well as our consultants. They had a busy couple of weeks. That's my update. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Questions from the board. Mr. Shane?
So, with the alternate way of getting the canopy done, would that work have to wait until the police station construction is complete, just so you don't have two contractors, two different contractors working on the same site?
Yes.
And if bids are going to be taken for that soon, and they have to wait until the end of the construction on the public safety building, can we make it a requirement that they honor their bids for that length of a time period?
Mr. Theron could probably speak to that, but I think we would have to be transparent of when we expect them to actually complete the work. A lot of the tax incentives expire in 2022, so we'd be looking at far greater issues if we can't get this thing done by 2022.
Great. And again, with a meeting date for us to award, we could potentially, if the bids are in and everything is in order, with town meeting that week, we could pick a time before the start of town meeting to potentially do that as well, rather than set a separate night aside.
So, I know that, and I appreciate the fact that the committee has approved the OPM's recommendation to go with electronic bidding for this project because just of the scope and the breadth of it, and especially what I saw in my office. If you saw my table during that, during that for the pre-qual, it was insane. And so, the good news is that we will be getting, not quite instantaneously, but just about, we're getting the results of the bid. We will go into town meeting knowing what the results of those bids are, but I don't believe, and Mr. Theron can correct me, that we will have had time to check references, do those pieces. We'll know the hard numbers, but we're not going to have all of that work done so that you could award, say, that first night. And I'd rather not talk about going two nights. So, but potentially, we could do a special meeting if we think the school vacation week may be an issue, specifically to award these contracts, you know, earlier than the 17th if we needed to.
And just one other point on that is, if we deny, if we deny alternate one, we don't go to alternate two and alternate three. So, the reason we phased it that way was, should the town not have a desire to continue golf operations, there still may be a strong desire to put a parking lot and a retaining wall in there to make use of the open space. So, we're trying to broadly approach this so that the will of town meeting would define which way that goes. Keep in mind, depending on how someone approaches, these alternatives can change which general contractor we get.
I'm inquisitive why you would say that there, is there a move a front that you have heard, where there is a group in town that does not, that wants to see the golf fail?
I have no personal knowledge. I stay as far away from that and stick to my project. But we are trying to keep all avenues open without jeopardizing our project. And that's why, because you have two warrant articles, there's a distinct possibility that one passes, one doesn't. So, we had to keep our options open. You can direct us to go a different way, but I think you'd be potentially jeopardizing our public safety project at that point, and we're trying not to jeopardize that because that was definitely goal number one of, you know, that town meeting warrant article, given that there was a lot of collaboration to get it there. But that's why we're approaching it that way, as opposed to, because otherwise, let's just say it went that way, where you had a split vote. You now don't even have a parking lot to use the space. You're using the spots that are out in front of the public safety building.
Yeah, I would, I'm sorry. I would think that if you were looking to change those ad alternates, you would only change two and three. You would leave one where it is. One is subject to CPC funds. Two is subject to, in all likelihood, borrowing. So, I would, you know, if you were going to move them, you would move the clubhouse and flip the clubhouse and the canopy. But I think that the way the committee has lined them up is probably the, you know, the best way to do it.
We're hoping to deny the canopy because that will be funded by someone else. That's the goal.
All right. I was just concerned about any undercurrent or any effort to try to see that the golf aspect fail.
That's not, our intention is to make it successful, which is why we, because I think you have to, I mean, the CPC chair could probably speak to this better than I could, but the funding is very specifically defined for certain items. So, unless we call out in the bid how much this retaining wall costs and how much this parking lot costs, I'm not sure how anyone would ever make sure that the right money came out of the right pot, even if everything got approved.
All right. Thank you. Other questions?
The two canopies you talked about, are those the only things that were taken out that the chiefs wanted?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So, I do have a question on solar.
Yes.
So, I know the solar's been bantered about. When I was first on this board a while ago, solar entities came here and said, you know, you can have solar for free and no strings attached. And, but then the issue was, all right, who owns, excuse me, who owns the panels? You know, who's responsible for replacement of expensive panels when they break? And then, that ended up, when that analysis came through, it was a significant amount of potential liability to the town. So, you know, my one concern is, I don't have an issue with taking a look at things, but I'm just, has that come up in any discussions you've had regarding potential cost to the town of owning and repairing and replacing?
I think it's ultimately going to be how you define your RFP, of what you expect of them going forward. If you say that they're ultimately responsible for the maintenance of both the canopy and the actual solar panel, right, that would then be a legal question of, is that properly termed, and do you get that in the contract that way? But I think, I think we have to define what we're looking for, which seems like a maintenance-free, we don't want to be maintaining these things. And if you get the bids that authorize that, then that seems like the path you would go. But yeah, if you're going to have to maintain it after five years and we're just cancing the can down the road for five years, yeah, I wouldn't go down that. But I think that's why we've asked our owner's project manager to think about this. But if you walk, if you go around to other stations, that's how they've looked at some of these. There's solar on top of them. We're not asking for solar on top of the roof or anything along those lines. It's literally limited to these actual canopies. So, Steve, the panels aren't that big on top of the actual...
So, and why, why would you limit to just the canopies and not the roof?
We're trying not to bite off more than we can chew.
I'm not saying I would...
I would, I would think aesthetics, right? You have neighbors that, you know, would potentially be able to see something, right? We had to do some screening just as part of the planning process to make sure that, you know, mechanicals don't become an issue for the neighborhood. So, I'm not sure that that's something where we had much of an appetite to introduce. I think what we do have an appetite to introduce is, I know, based on a prior meeting, the superintendent is looking at the same option for the schools.
Right.
So, if you could get, if the worlds collided, and Mr. Purple could coordinate with Ms. Johnson, and you could go out for an RFP together, the school is obviously much more attractive for the solar company than these little ones that will be sitting on top of the canopies. But if they're already going to look at it, and they're town-owned facilities, you know, if you could approach it that way, you're going to probably get more bang for your buck and probably a better income stream into the town.
And there was a bid that was, that was done regionally between the schools, Northborough, Southborough. However, you know, limited number of buildings that we could use. We're looking to dispose of Fayetteville. We can't use that. Can't use existing police and fire. We don't know what the current, what the new police and fire will look like, and we don't have a lot of great options. So, obviously, that is something that we can explore once we get a better sense of, you know, when it's going to be there. But again, it's a couple of years down the road at this point. So, but we can absolutely look at that.
Other questions?
If we deem those canopies, especially the police ones, to be important or critical, can we use the contingency money to see that they're done?
Yes. But yeah, yes, you can. You can do anything with that contingency. Obviously, our goal is to return as much as we can to the taxpayer. But that would mean we have to accept, based on our current ordering, the retaining wall, the parking lot, and the clubhouse. So, if town meeting doesn't go the way that you want it in terms of golf course operations and the parking lot, you, I don't know what other option you are going to have other than to turn it down because you don't have a way to pay for it. So, then we have to turn down the canopy just because of that. So, we did, you know, put public safety at the back end of that particular decision because we thought we had a viable alternative. The other thing is, you could go out and do this once the building's up and wait two years and do it then, if you're not ready to pull the trigger on it now, want to make, see where we end up, you know, using that 1.7, if that's the right number.
Yeah, the way the project's going to be staged, you could go back out to bid separately for that, you know, and not impact the rest of the project.
The important thing I probably should have mentioned before is, included in our base bid, is they're going to wire out to where these canopies would be, so that it's ready to go once someone is ready to construct it. So, you're not going to be, like, digging up a brand-new parking lot, sort of thing.
All right. Anything else?
Jason, you still need a motion, though, as far as direction.
If the board is supportive of authorizing Mr. Purple to at least go out and get an RFP over the next month, and then we'll come back to you with the results. I don't think you're binding yourself to anything. You could just decline it if it doesn't meet, you know, whatever legal or maintenance requirements that you're looking for.
That would be my motion.
All right. Moved by Ms. Faniff. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So, for discussion, then, then I would suggest, in lines with, you know, how we've been talking about this, I mean, my concern is, you know, a significant cost that could be coming to a town, to the town, if we were to have to own and replace and repair panels. So, if that can be mitigated through the RFP process, you know, that would be my... be my suggestion. I don't know if there are any other thoughts from others. No. So, all right.
No, absolutely. I mean, you know, you and I have talked about this and all of these net metering projects and, you know, you get all these savings for nothing. And if something happens, they walk away. There's no strings. I'm real skeptical about some of those things. So, so we'll make sure we take, you know, as much due diligence, you know, facilities as working with an energy services company. And we will use their guidance to help us through this process and use their expertise to make sure that we're not incurring any unnecessary liability if we go down this road.
Okay. And to the extent it could be coordinated with superintendent of schools, that would be ideal as well.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monoski. Mr. Ballantyne, continued discussion of FY19 operational and capital budget.
I think he walked out of the room so he could walk back in for a grand re-entry.
Ah.
You getting a running start?
Welcome, sir.
So, just while he gets set up, um...
Is there something to be presented on the big screen or no?
Brian's got some handouts.
What do I do?
Yes, he does have some handouts for discussion purposes. And hopefully, we can wrap up our discussions of the budget, the capital and the operational budget.
Thank you.
There's been some additional information that we've had over the past...
Thank you, sir.
...week. I'm good. All right. Thanks. Over the past week, and I can have Brian go through that. We did provide you some information last week concerning transfer station and discussion of those fees. But I'll let Brian, I'll let Brian speak because, like I said, some of those things, additional information has come in, some things have changed. And I think our position kind of has changed now as to where we stand on that. So, Brian?
So, we are at a 3.9% budget that we're ready to bring before you for at least some approval tonight. The health insurance came in, our bid with Tufts Insurance came in at, it was right around 2%, which is great. We had some great history the past year experience. So, we finally did get a final bid from them that saved us quite a bit of money on the health insurance budget. So, that budget, we brought down to the appropriate level based on those bids. So, this budget pretty much includes everything we've talked about with the exception of the golf course funding and the recreation proposed funding for their articles. Everything else has pretty much stayed the same that you saw the last time. Library, I think, was tweaked a bit due to some personnel changes in their department with an assistant director's position that's now approved. So, he had to tweak his budget. If you approve this tonight, the only thing that should change going forward is the regional budget. It will not go up. This is, we have it at a 2.9% increase rate now. If anything, it will be lower than that. We've been assured. They don't vote, the school committee does not vote that budget until the end of the month officially. So, we'll have those numbers, the exact numbers, in another week or so with the regional. Other than that, all the capital stayed the same that we had talked about last time. Police officers in there. As the town administrator alluded to, we did, we did assume a rather modest, small increase in the transfer station fees. And we eliminated the, assuming the elimination of a discount period. We did not touch anything else on the, on the transfer station. You know, the board can exercise its discretion whether you want to go down that road and have a further discussion about it, or you want to leave it that way for this year and revisit that at some point.
I'd like to have it for the discussion, but go ahead.
So, as it stands now, though, the only change is there's no discount for getting an early sticker.
Correct.
Everything else is the same as it is this current year.
Correct. No change at all.
Yeah, that, well, that, and that would be up to the board, but that is, that is the plan. Based on the additional funding that, you know, we were fortunate to receive through the negotiations with the health insurance, it was an additional $90,000 that we did not anticipate if the board was willing to eliminate the early discount. So, instead of the two, you know, if you, if you, if you apply early enough, you can get it for 220, your transfer station sticker for 220 instead of 250. If you eliminate that early discount, we feel that with the $90,000 savings, you know, the additional savings could be achieved with charging simply at the 250 rate. And you would not have to address the fees. You would not have to change the senior rate, which is zero. And, you know, that can be something, you know, that can be discussed at another time if the board wanted to take another, another action with that. I do want to point out one thing. I was looking at the document. On the back of the document where it talks about the capital articles, there is a, there was an error. The first item, the private fiber line, the $30,000 is under, should be under the levy, not under the ambulance fund.
Right.
And that was something that...
That was one of the changes.
That was something that we discussed that was, that was brought to our attention. And, and that was moved into the, into the levy. That does not affect the, the budget number. And I do want to point out, Brian mentioned that the budget is at 3.9. The budget increase is actually 3.86. So...
And do you have a rough sense, Brian, as to what percentage of all the sticker people get theirs early and this year took advantage of the discount?
I did not have a chance to talk to the town clerk because he's the one that provided the data. He's been a little bit ill lately. So, we haven't been able to connect. But it looks like, looking at through his data, it was about 1,400 people had the early, the early discount.
So, in practicality, those 1,400 people are seeing a $30 increase to the sticker fees for this year.
Correct. Correct.
What was the total number of stickers?
Thirty-three hundred, somewhere around there, thirty-four hundred. No, it's probably a...
Yeah, I mean, the challenge there, of course, is the town clerk has to be fully prepared to have an onslaught of these, you know, the last couple of days of...
So, the alternative would be a small increase that would actually bring the sticker price and make it a little bit closer to being self-sufficient. And it would also solve that problem, and we could still have a discount period.
Well, you're, you're going exactly where I was just starting to go. You're, that, so I wanted to see if there, if the board had an appetite to discuss whether or not we should bring this to more of a fully, fully funded operation through the sticker fees and still be able to offer a discount that would keep, you know, every, everyone from coming in all at the end. Might be of a benefit to the town clerk and who took on all of this. So...
I think that's more appropriate.
Other thoughts? Mr. Shea?
I'll give an opposite thought on it. And I don't know why we would make the transfer station operation the only town service that's self-funded. We don't make the library self-funded. You know, we don't have stickers for the library. And I'm sure that there's plenty of people in town that don't utilize the services that the library offers. It's their choice, but it's a service available to them. I think at the end of the day, we need to make a decision, yes or no, do we want the transfer station? And if the answer to that is yes, then it's a service that's available to all citizens, whether they take advantage of it or not. I mean, ultimately, to get real, and I think it's way too late to get into this now, but to make it as equitable as possible, we should, ought to decide, yes or no, do we want to have a transfer station? Give everybody a sticker. And then the variable cost in operating the transfer station is the disposal cost of the trash. That should be a pay-as-you-throw. But the cost to staff the transfer station and run the lights, all that, if it's a town service, it ought to be on the tax base, open and available to everybody. And the variable costs ought to be paid for separately. But, so I would argue not to make the transfer station a self-funding town service when no other town services are forced to be self-funded. I mean, we don't make the senior center self-funded. So, this, it's my opinion.
All right. It's a good one. Ms. Brackio?
I'm a similar mindset to Mr. Shea. Other than, I'm not necessarily a fan of pay-as-you-throw.
And that's a minority opinion in my own house.
Well, what I would like to see, and I really think this is a great discussion. I think it's great that we were able to find a way to do this for this year. I would really like to take the next year and look at alternatives. I know that Mr. Purple and Mr. Ballantyne have done that, but maybe we could take it a step further. Let the public, this has been a very discussed topic. I know I've been stopped multiple times. I'm sure many of you have as well. Everybody has an opinion on this. I'd like to see it really explored over the next year and, and see what we can come up with. I mean, I, I agree with that it is a service. And if taxpayers choose to use that service, you know, they pay a fee through the sticker. It's just a matter of how we get there. And I would be happy to work with whomever, whatever, however we wanted to do it over the next year. I'd like to actively be involved in finding a way that's feasible to the citizens as well as this board.
And this is something that the Public Works Planning Board is set up for.
Well, there you go. It's perfect.
To provide, to provide this. Now, if you engage them on this, the first thing you're going to hear is, we've looked at this how many times? And, and they've, they've evaluated this and gone through it. But, so I think there really needs to be some parameters and some, you know, viewpoints and some options that you really want them to explore and come back with. I agree. Some of the issues, and we'll get into that a little bit later, maybe in terms of the warrant, some of these issues that we've brought up in terms of placeholders and that, I think are great to talk about in October and, and really evaluate and put some thought and really get some steam behind them. But, you know, it's very difficult to try and do something of that magnitude with good thought, not bad intentions, but try and really do it the right way, you know, 10 days before we close, before we sign the final warrant. So...
Agreed. And just one last thought is, and in some of the people that have reached out to me, there are some people that don't use other services in town necessarily. They don't have kids in the schools. They don't have kids that use recreation. They don't use the senior center. They're not of age yet. So, some people feel that, you know, this is one of the services that they get from the town. And I just think, and I think this board has done that, has tried to be reflective of all the different opinions and concerns that people have. But I would just like to see over the next year, taking it a step further and coming up with a viable solution that I think we can all agree on.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's one of the reasons why we, we moved to allow for people to have a recycle-only. I mean, that's, people love to go back there and, and either recycle or go to the swap shop. So, you know, we've, we've, we've come a decent way from, from when it used to be. Other thoughts? And I have another one. Ms. Faniff?
If we're serious about having a discussion about this so we don't find ourselves here again next year as a board, it can't wait till October. It has, the discussion has to start right after town meeting.
Yep.
Because sooner or later, we're going to be, we're looking at $3.5 million to rehab the transfer station.
Right.
That's not going to be covered by stickers. So, the discussion has to start immediately after town meeting.
Agreed.
What is the sticker price now? Can someone tell me?
Two fifty.
So...
I would argue 220. That's all right.
I'll pay for my second.
You know, and I don't necessarily need to, all right. So, my, my main concern was less fully funding. But we have offered the early discount for people who do it early, and we've done that for years. So, you know, even if we were to increase it by $20 and then still offer it, you know, an early discount fee of $20, you know, is there a way that we could retain it, move, move, move it up some, but give it back for those who want to do it early and maybe make the operations downstairs a little smoother? I do have some concern that there is going to be a massive influx. I know when I don't have to pay for something until, you know, the 30th of the month, all right, I'll, I'll be happy to pay you on the 30th of the month. There's, and then, you know, what's it going to be like downstairs on that last couple of days with everyone trying to get stickers? I don't know. I, maybe Mr. Hagerty's already thought it through and he has the staff to, to do it. And that was my thought on, is there any appetite for that discussion? None from Mrs. Faniff, okay? Mr. Shea?
No.
None? None from you? Okay. Mr. Shifrin?
I would.
I don't know. Ms. Brackio, what do you think?
Not at, I'm sorry. Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
All right. So, so we'd like to see it as is, as presented by Mr. Ballantyne, who will, may also help give out stickers on that last day. You never know. Could be a full-service operation out there, down there next September. Okay. Other aspects of the budget you want to talk about?
A question about the individual budgets, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
The elected boards, have they agreed with the numbers?
Yes.
So, the numbers identified by the, by each department, the department head or the elected boards have agreed with those numbers?
Yes.
So, there's no conflict?
No. Thankfully, no.
All right. Thank you.
No, we've worked, we worked with, with all the departments and, and, you know, we, I acknowledged them last time when we had the discussion. But all the departments have been very cooperative. And the, the electeds have been very cooperative as well in, in getting to where we need to be. I think the interesting thing about this budget process is everybody wanted to get, get in earlier. And I have no problem with everybody peeking behind the curtain and seeing how the wizard does everything. And that, the transparency, I think, is great. It's just that everybody had a lot of oh-my-God moments because you get to see where we start. You usually come in at the point where we just about have this thing in a picture frame. And, you know, that's why it was actually good for you to kind of get a sense of how we work this down to where you finally end up with and what we go to town meeting. And, and I know that, you know, it's been a little shock to the system for advisory as well to, to see this. But, but I think it's, you get a little bit of, a better sense of appreciation of the process. So...
I thank you both. A follow-up question, Brian. Planning Board, not Planning Board, Conservation? Is that, does that include any summer money for the CR that we've been discussing? For Operation Management?
No.
I don't, yeah.
No. There is a, there is a CPA article for, for the, for the endowment and any legal funds for the conservation restriction. But there is nothing included in that budget as of yet.
For town oversight?
For town oversight, simply because those negotiations between SVT and CONCOM through Attorney Legere are still ongoing. And once those, once that relationship is identified and agreed to, any management that is responsibility of conservation or somebody that we have to sub out to do that work on behalf of conservation, those costs will need to be incorporated. But it could be that we're past town meeting at that point, Bonnie, and we'll be, we'll be talking with advisory, potentially for reserve fund transfer until we, we know exactly what that's going to be.
So, would you make the advisory board aware with a letter?
I will.
That it's not in this budget?
I will do that. Right. Well, and, and like I said, we can't put something in because we don't know what it is at this point.
I understand. It's negotiated, but they need to know that that number's not...
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Other thoughts for Mr. Ballantyne? All right. Thoughts on the budget itself? People comfortable with what they're seeing? I am. All right. Do we need a vote on it or no?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the Board of Selectmen approve the recommended FY19 budget at $53,852,281 for operations and for $944,500 for the capital budget.
All right. Moved by Kalinda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
As presented this evening with a date 2/22/2018.
Roger. All right. Any further comments, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. And if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind, I wouldn't, if, if the other members agree, I wouldn't mind moving up the discussion on the town meeting warrant, scheduling sponsors for presentations. Mr. Ballantyne may have some insight for us on that?
Mr. Chairman, so there was a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the board's attention this evening. First of which is, you know, the warrant continues to be a living document. You did close the warrant. We did have some pla, we do have some placeholders. And we need to decide, make some decisions on placeholders that are moving forward and placeholders that are being eliminated. There is one change...
There is one change in the Excel sheet that you have, but I did not have time to make it in the larger document where the wording is. The article that Mr. Ballantyne had asked for a placeholder for rescinding the borrowing authorization for the septic repair loan program. We talked with our financial advisor, and essentially that authorization, we've utilized the authorization. There is nothing to rescind. So therefore, there is no need for the article. That will simply, that simply goes away without further action. So that article is not listed on here. It was the old Article 19. And now you can see on the sheet, you're down to 36 articles. We do have three additional articles that you see at the bottom in red discussing enterprise funds and the Town Manager Charter. And I think I would just ask Mr. Ballantyne just to briefly speak to 34 and 35, which is the enterprise fund pieces.
So I assume the board is aware of what enterprise funds are and how they work a little bit. It's the water enterprise fund or the water fund in particular is something we've chatted about here and there occasionally over the years. And the auditor has brought the issue up too. It is a little bit involved to set these up, and there is dates that you're supposed to put forth certain information before you bring these and get them active up and running. So as we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, some things are better done in the fall in preparation for town meeting. So I think we'd recommend that we put these off until next year for action, to actually get them going. I think personally, the water fund is a very good candidate, and we may actually want to really go through and do that. I'm not sure what the others are, but we can look at them in the same vein. Give us time. The superintendent, the water superintendent and the fire chief, along with any other people involved, would have to sort of lend some work towards this to prep it and get some numbers and, you know, in preparation for actually having these go through town meeting and possibly enacting. So we definitely don't mind bringing them forward next year for action. Like I said, there's certainly at least one that I think may be a good candidate to do this. But I think we should just do it for next year. So that would be my personal opinion on the matter.
I have no issue with that. Anyone else? Ms. Fanof.
I disagree. If not a revolving fund for the ambulance, I mean, an enterprise fund certainly should be a revolving fund.
Could be a revolving fund. I'm not sure it should be, but it could be.
I'm suggesting it should be. The rationale I have is what is not spent in the ambulance fund, it's spent, it's put into the general fund.
Correct.
And spent on anything. It could be reducing a budget.
It's not one-to-one, but a lot of funds aren't one-to-one, so.
I know.
That in itself is not, it's, the ambulance fund is a little different. It's, like I said, we've done a cash flow on it, the way we do it now. And we've sort of spent it out over the years. It's actually a pretty decent operation, the way it runs. And it's common to have ambulance funds be receipts reserve fund is what they call that in a town. So it's a fairly common tool. I'm not sure what you'd be looking for to get away from that. And that's, again, I don't mind looking into it for next year, but I would have to know what you'd try to get out of it.
I'm suggesting, when you look at the ambulance cost to the town.
Yeah.
And individuals are being billed for that service, like the transfer station or anyone else, but you're actually being billed for a service. And I appreciate that service. I think the money should directly go into paying for that service and reducing the line in that budget for supplies, training, mileage, fuel, and everything else.
Could do that, but again, you'd be, it's not going to cover the cost. So you're going to have a, you're going to have a subsidy.
Take the first step to do it.
You could.
Instead of putting the money in the general fund, we could be reducing a budget. Instead of spending it somewhere else.
Well, the idea is to spend it, to spend, it's kind of how you caught it. The idea of what it is now is you are spending it on the general fund. You're right. But it's sort of reducing the tax rate, which is reducing the fire department's budget. And it's not direct one-to-one.
But you're also, you're also taking the responsibility away from town meeting, and you're giving it to the fire chief for the expenditure of it.
Oh, I'm saying reduce the fire department's budget before it ever gets to town meeting by the sums of money that we have.
But who controls that budget is the fire chief.
Fire chief. He can reduce his budget.
Which some boards don't like that. So there's ways, that's why this is a little more involved conversation. There's authority issues here. I'm not sure.
But we, and we just, the point I think we made earlier, we just set the budget. And you want to try and do that this year, so we'd have to go back and deconstruct the budget.
That's fine. We've had this discussion for two months. I'll take it off the table and I'll just bring it up at town meeting. Thank you.
All right, anything else from Mr. Ballantyne? Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Purple?
I think, well, I, I think, well, I think the one other issue is obviously the Article Number 36, which is the last one regarding the.
Right. So the Town Manager Charter. So I took a look at it. I took a crack at making some modifications to it. I mean, a lot of what was previously in that charter dealt with establishing a five-person board. All of that can go away. So, you know, the Town Manager Charter is actually quite limited now from, you know, what that document otherwise would have been. It still would require a special act, just like the movement to a five-member board did, which also should not be, you know, any significant impediment. One of the major issues, I recall at the time, was whether or not the town, strong town administrator or a town manager would appoint the town clerk. Obviously, we've moved well beyond that, and we have an appointed town clerk position. So any elected town clerk position, so that whole discussion is gone as well. So it's left with really the meat of what a town manager would be able to do, which is a lot of what we've seen the current town administrator do in terms of fiscal responsibility, you know, some appointment responsibility. But general oversight of all town operations, negotiations with unions and whatnot, which we've seen be very successful recently. So anyway, I don't, we have a limited amount of time to try to do this. I've taken a crack at it. I still probably need a little more refinement of it myself. I did get a very nice note from Mr. Butler, who must have heard our conversations, and offering to, you know, take a look at things as well, which is very kind of him. I mean, he spoke passionately about the whole concept when we moved to, you know, anytime we're looking to, you know, move or change the way that we've been doing business. I think there's some nice efficiencies that could be had by moving to a town manager. You know, and so anyway, again, we're limited in time. I've got something that is about 95% complete. I'd love to share with others and get their thoughts, if there's still some appetite to try and do it. If we end up, I mean, I don't want to give up my own personal opinion. I'd rather try it. And if there's an appetite for it and people think, wow, that's pretty reasonable, why not try it? If we can't get it, then it'll be teed up for next year. But my thought is just to give it a little more effort. First on my part, unless others wanted to do it. But I've, I think I've accomplished 90-plus percent of what needs to be taken out of the draft we had last time and share with everyone here what those are and get people's opinion. And if we have time, you want to do it, great. If the consensus of the board is, you know, it's too much too late, then, you know, we can try again next year. Anyway, that's my thought, and I'd be ready to share something probably, you know, early next week. I don't know if that's even enough time, but that was my attempt. So that's why that one's there. Thoughts, opinions? Do you want me to squash it? Do you want me, do you want to continue to at least look at it, see what you think?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I still would like to hear, like, along with it, when you present it, pros and cons to it, and also hear public comment and from our department heads, you know, for them to have an opportunity to comment. And if we have time to do that, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Yep, okay. Other thoughts? Ms. Bracchio?
I'm not necessarily, I don't have an opinion on it particularly one way or another at this time. My concern is, as with anything, trying to get it through town meeting, I worry about the timeframe on trying to get it for this town meeting as far as public outreach and making the public aware. I mean, with a lot of new people who've moved into town since this first came up. I think that's the biggest challenge, is educating the public on why we want to do it and, as Brian said, some of the pros and cons on it. I just worry that there's not enough time to let the public be aware of, you know, what's entailed in this. That's my main concern with it. I guess it's up to the other board members also, but that's kind of my concern, is the timeframe.
Yeah, I think, I think every single article requires some, you know, update to the public as to really what it is. I mean, you can look at any of these things, and the description is very minimal, right? So it's really what we've put on the website, what we talk about at meetings, what the article summaries actually say. And as we know, with 10,000-plus residents, only a handful actually come to town meeting. So those who are really interested generally are going to take a look at things and read in advance. Whenever we close this, there's going to be, until then, and, you know, from that point until April, for those that are interested to really take a look and ask questions at meetings and whatnot. But so I actually, I still think there would be time for people who want to be educated on it, can be. You'll see in the draft that I had, we're talking about, I think it's down to maybe two pages. It's really not that long of a read. But, you know, I think there's time to educate folks. Any other thoughts? Do people want to leave it for now or do you want to squash it?
So I think squash is a harsh word.
Well.
But, and again, I was very much supportive of it when it first came up, however many years ago that was. I think, so just looking upon some recent experiences that we've had, you know, we had two special town meetings, well over, you know, 600, 700 people attend those for very, very big issues in town. And for both of those, we did a lot of legwork. So there were numerous meetings that committees had. People were able to find out what arguments were on both sides, be prepared for those. I think it's inevitable that there are going to be some that have arguments against this. And, you know, at this stage of the game, we don't know what those are. And, you know, we're not, personally, I don't think that we're fully prepared to undertake it at this time. I think similar to the transfer station thing, I think it's something that we should focus on right away and get it ready for next year. But my sense is that there's just not enough time to do it now.
All right, others?
I agree with Mr. Shea. I think it's, we don't have the time to do it and be able to debate it, to debate it at a town meeting and stand behind it. We have new members we have to be considerate of and new residents as well. And we also have two hearings, I think we're responsible for, two bylaw hearings that might be coming before us as well that we have to post and all of the legwork for that. It's tight, and I think after town meeting, it's probably a discussion to start having all over again.
Okay. So instead of squash it, maybe what I'll do. Yeah, so I'll continue my effort on it, and I'll share it with folks. And maybe that can also help get the ball rolling so that we don't lose whatever minimal amount of momentum we may have had this go around and, you know, get some other public input on it, on what that new draft would look like, and then go from there. Who knows? We may have one or two special town meetings between the next annual town meeting and the following annual town meeting that seems to happen.
It could be one of, it could be one of the two priorities of this board.
Yes.
Starting May.
Okay. So if I'm hearing right, 34, 35, and 36 would come off. Is that right? Okay. Mr. Purple, can we go through these and see if we can get some board consensus on yays or nays and what we might support? And then who might like to speak to these?
Well, I don't know if we need to do, if we need to do motions this evening and who's going to be responsible for those. But I think if the board was willing to go through, I did this with advisory last night, and you can see in the list that you have some of the articles that they took positions on and where they decided that they needed more information and more discussion. The first article, here committee reports. Normally, this is at town meeting because quite honestly, at this point, we don't know what the articles, what the, what any reports would be.
Any objection? All right.
Article two, acceptance of pilot payments. This basically allows the town treasurer to accept any sums that we get from St. Mark's, from Fay, from Harvard, New England Center for Children during the year.
Yes.
Yeah, these are all, the first handful are very basic, right?
Right. But you've got to, you've got to remember, so not, but you've got two, we've got two members who hadn't, who haven't heard these before, so. I just want to, I just want to give a brief explanation. The annual borrowing authorization, this is simply allowing the treasurer to borrow in anticipation of revenue. According to Mr. Ballantyne, we have never used this. This is a safety net. We've never had to use it. We do it every year. It's kind of an annual article, just in case something were to happen and we had to borrow in anticipation of revenue coming in.
Yep. Ready, anyone who wants to stop? Mr. Purple, as he goes through this, please do. Mr. Purple?
Number four, authorization contracts in excess of three years. Mass General Law Chapter 30B allows for contracts to be entered into by the selectman or the school committee up to three years. We have, since I've been here, voted to exceed that limit. Previous communities I've been in, we voted to exceed it without a limit. Here, we voted to limit it to seven years. There's been no issues, and I have no reason to believe that there'll be anything that we would look to beyond seven years. So that limit has been fine. And it's not in the article itself, but it is in the motion every year that it is capped at seven years.
Yep. Any objections? No, okay.
Article five, salary administration plan. I would suggest you hold on that. The language that you have in here is still draft. It's being finalized by Ms. Rosenbloom and Ms. Hale, and they'll be presenting to you at a coming date. Article six, budget adjustments. The finance team is still working on what budget adjustments we may need to make to balance out fiscal '18. Number seven, fiscal year 2019 budget. You just approved the budget for this year, so I would assume that you would also recommend passage of the article.
Yes.
Article eight, capital budget. You also just approved that this evening. I would also assume that you would be supportive of the article. Article nine, insurance deductible account. There are those times where we do have to pay insurance deductibles that are not covered under our policy. It's a rare occurrence. It does happen. This is something that has not been addressed. It's an existing article, but it is depleted at this point. So we're just looking to replenish it with $10,000 so that we do have a little bit of money there should we need to use it. Article 10, payment to retirees for accrued vacation and sick time when employees retire. They obviously have the right to get paid a portion of their remaining sick time as well as any vacation time that's accrued. Each year, Mr. Ballantyne sits down, goes through the personnel records, takes a look at those employees that may retire over the course of the next year, determines what the liability would be in terms of vacation and sick, and that money is brought forward. That account is currently, and Brian can correct me, I believe it's zero. I believe that that account is fully spent down. And while we do not have any letters in hand as to people that are retiring next year, this amount is, would replenish the account. You know, we may not have to come back at this for a couple of years if people don't retire as we assume they do. But it's good to have money in there so that we do have that funded.
Agreed.
Article 11, hiring consultants, engineers, water quality specialists. You may be familiar with this a little bit. Uh, you may be familiar with this a little bit. Um, this account was funded several years ago, um, I want to say, Brian, 2007, eight? I think was this originally funded, it was like $30,000. And the money pretty much stayed in there at about twenty, $25,000 for quite a while, until we began doing the schematic and the, and the design work for the public safety facility and we needed a funding source. And so this is the money that the board agreed to use. That is now at zero and, um, we wanted to replenish that back to $25,000. This is all under the control of the Board of Selectmen. Um, you've used it in the past also, um, for, um, for safety studies that residents have asked for on streets, things of that nature. So this is, um, this is what that fund would be used for. Uh, article twelve, um, that is the annual capital maintenance fund by facilities. This was in agreement, um, uh, a number of years ago with advisory that it is better for, to give facilities, uh, you know, a, not a pot of money, but a, uh, an amount of money each year that they handle all of their projects and they do all of that out of rather than each of the projects coming forward separately. And, um, Mr. Reinhardt before him and, um, uh, Mr. Parent now have done well to use that fund and have done a lot of great projects. This year, the majority of those funds were used for the unanticipated septic replacement outback and, um, moving of youth and family services from Fayville, uh, into the art center, which I believe is happening, uh, next week. So they'll be shifting over. The offices are done. I haven't been over to see them since they've been painted, but it's a, it's a great layout of space over there. Article thirteen, uh, payment of an FY seventeen outstanding invoice. Uh, this was, um, for the planning board. They had a contract with RKG Associates for some forty B review work, um, that was, um, signed at the end of fiscal sixteen. The money was encumbered forward into seventeen, into fiscal seventeen to be spent. Um, the money was not spent within the fiscal year and there was no bill that was submitted to be paid. Fiscal seventeen closed out. The money reverted back to the general fund and there is no mechanism to pay for it now, except for town meeting to approve the bill to be paid. The money is going to be, and speaking with the planning board, the money will be, um, paid out of the fiscal eighteen budget, out of planning's fiscal eighteen budget. So it will have no impact on nineteen.
All right.
Okay. Article fourteen, the feasibility study designed for the senior center renovation. That's $30,000 that I think we discussed at length, um, when this, when this, uh, Mr. Harrington and, uh, Ms. LaFrances came in and, and talked about this. I don't know if you have any further questions?
None here? Any, Ms. Vaniff?
Uh, the summary mark, are we going to put in there that it's limited in scope? It's not, we're not redoing a big building? We're not trying to design a two-story building?
No, well, I think.
It's more than a small space.
We can change that. I asked, I asked John, um, Parent if he was, if he was okay with the, um, with the explanation. You know, i- it, it basically is to address, I'm just getting to it. It is to address, you know, the, the additional bathrooms and meeting recreational activity space. So, you know, those two items are specifically mentioned. If you've got some suggestions on refining that a little bit, I'm happy to.
Well, it's also to look at, I, maybe we're talking the same thing, but I'm looking at it differently. Expanding the activity space.
Feasibility of, okay.
Which is constructing.
Yep, yep. I can put expanding in there.
But it's very, very limited, small. It's probably the size of a very large home enclosed porch.
Yeah.
We're not looking at redoing the whole building.
And I had asked Mr. Parent, um, sorry, I had, uh, spoke to Mr. Parent yesterday, this morning, actually, just to try to find out a general scope of the size. He said it's, it's like a twenty by twenty room type thing, short of the bathroom. So, um, I think just to maybe clarify, I agree with Mrs. Vaniff that s- some people may think we're looking to add a huge addition with the second story and, and just so we're a little clearer on the scope of, of what's, uh, the thirty thousand covered.
Okay, so I can come back and I'll work with Mr. Parent to clarify the scope and, um, make sure that the understanding is it's not a, it's not a huge project.
Thank you.
Okay. Article fifteen, um, golf course capital improvements. You know, at this point, we still, you know, we, we simply have the number that we got through the last cost estimating, um, for the, uh, the items that are not being handled by CPC. It's about three hundred, little north of $300,000 that we're probably looking at for borrowing. Again, that number would be refined based on the bids that we actually get in. Um, and we know what that number actually looks at so that we can really refine what that borrowing number was, would be. So I would hold on that at this point. Recreation, uh, the capital improvements, I would hold on that discussion. Recreation is going to be coming into your next meeting on the sixth and can present, um, to you at that time. Articles seventeen and eighteen, uh, I may call Mr. Ballantyne back or, or Ms. Krieger, um, who is here, uh, to talk about, um, the, the revolving funds. Every year we do the revolving funds. We, we approve each fund. We have ten of them. And, um, the Department of Revenue has said, we don't want you to do it that way anymore. We want you to put a bylaw in place which defines the fund, defines what, who's responsible for it, what you can do, what you can't do, and when the funds can be used. And, um, I do want to, I do want to thank, uh, the town accountant, um, for, for putting this together and, and going through what the DOR wants and actually putting it into the article, um, that she has done. So they, they, they're breaking it up now, so it's going to be a bylaw for the revolving funds. And then each year, you will do what you see in article eighteen, which is simply the funds listed and the amounts next to it, without all of the explanation or the limited explanation. I think there's more explanation now in the bylaw than we had before. There was some discussion, uh, at advisory last night as to maybe looking at, you know, a, a fund or two and looking at the, what it can or can't be used for and, and maybe having some discussion about the fences around some of those permissions. And so they may be forwarding some thoughts on those, but, um, what you, you know, what you have in front of you for seventeen and eighteen at this point, I don't know if you're familiar enough if you want to take a position or if you'd like to have more discussion about those.
Thoughts? People ready to take a position or do you want to hold? Do you have questions?
I'm ready.
Same here. Anyone else? I'm supportive. Ms. Vaniff?
I'm supportive.
All right, there you go.
For seventeen and eighteen?
Correct.
Okay, um, Mr. Ballantyne, would you like to come up and explain the deed conveyance for Kimberly?
Done one of these, um, several years ago, but this is a deed in lieu of tax foreclosure. For those of you new to hear this, tax foreclosure is very expensive and time-consuming to do through land court. So, um, the town council loves these opportunities to get properties that, uh, we're able to get that are in that type of distress for, um, um, the ease of just going through town meeting and, and getting the authorization, the deed signed over from the appropriate individual. So this, this tax lien goes way back. It's, it's only, it's open space. It's not, nothing, no structures on it, uh, it's not buildable, et cetera, et cetera. I think the total tax liability is about $6,000. So you'd tell just by the tax amount that it's not a, it's not a very valuable property. But it is, you know, it is open space that abuts three or four properties, the location of it. So the town would obviously do nothing with it except hold it as, again, open space, which is great to have and it will clean up our books a little bit. So, um, it's a great opportunity that we're, that we're able to do that.
Questions, concerns, supportive?
A question?
Ms. Vaniff?
Zero. We're talking about Zero Kimberly Lane, right? Where is that located?
Uh, what's the, what's the, I, I can't recall the street that it's off of.
I'm just looking it up myself.
Yeah. I actually wanted to provide a map of it too and I, I just totally slipped my mind because Paul was going to get one.
It's not showing up?
Zero.
Yeah, zero. Wish I had the file with me, but I don't.
Does the fire chief know where it is?
Not in West.
Kimberly.
Where is Kimberly Lane?
The old Kimberly Park. Wow, everyone's not.
I don't think you should take it.
I can give it, I can get it to you, but.
Well, obviously it exists, so it wouldn't hurt us to do at-town meeting for this one if we don't know where it is now.
Well, you have, we can come back with some additional information at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get a map. I just get a map anyways.
I'm just looking to see if there are issues. So it, the purpose of this exercise is to take positions on the articles that you, that you have no issues with, that you know what you want to do. The ones that are left may be ones that we need to come back with more information or you need to have sponsors come in to, to further discuss those. So we can do that, um, come back with more information at the next meeting. Um, Brian, before you leave, um, the next article, the acceptance of the, uh, Mass General Law updating the senior tax exemption?
Oh, the senior ta- this is actually something the, I'll speak for the assessor, but this is something the assessor's office had gone through their exemptions and they already have. They are allowed to accept these clauses that automatically increase the, the rates that the exemption limits are set by. The exemption limits are set by certain, um, incomes and, uh, lim- uh, fiscal limitations. So if you don't accept these, these automatic, um, uh, increases annually to the CPI, they just stay the same always. Well, he's, he noticed he did it for certain clauses in his exemption pool, but this was one of the ones that, for whatever reason, they don't know why, they just never did this for this particular exemption. So, um, this is the normal senior exemption, I believe, which is the $1,000 on the tax bill. Up to a thousand that you can get. So this would, in essence, make it a little more beneficial to the applicant because they could, their, the limits that they're held by could change year to year based on the CPI, which is a good thing, actually.
So it helps people who are getting the benefit to maintain their eligibility.
Right, so if it's a twenty, if it's a income limit of $40,000, it won't stay like that. It'll be a year or two, might be $42,000 or something like that. That's actually helpful to them.
Because we have come back to town meeting to increase limits based on actions of the legislature making changes. And this way, we will not have to come back to address this again because it's automatically going to increase based on the CPI.
Zero Kimberly seems to be off of, uh, Stubtoe Lane, but, all right, which is off of Middle.
Oh, okay.
All right. At least that's where Waze sends me.
Let's get some more, yeah, we'll get some more information and bring that up at the next meeting.
I'll look it up on the town's.
Is there a, is there a sense of the senior tax exemption article? Support?
Yep.
Uh, the next eight articles are CPA. Article twenty, uh, article twenty-one is simply the administrative article where anticipated funding coming from the state is broken out into the various buckets as required. Um, this is, this is an annual article that, that is required. And the board has a sense of this.
I don't think we're not going to support that. I mean, I'd be surprised, so I would say that's one. It's interesting that advisory did not take a position, huh?
I think advisory wanted to, um, I think that they held all of the CPA articles, um, to have, uh, someone from CPC come in and, and I think speak to the articles. So, um, like I said, I'm not sure how far you want to go down, you know, this, this list. The, you know, the next one, uh, this, the first one administrative is fairly straightforward. The second one is the, uh, payments from CPA for the Burnett House bond. Again, fairly straightforward. It's an obligation that the town has entered into and they will pay the bond payments as defined by the, the, um, the finance director.
I mean, that makes sense to me, that one.
So, do you want to get into the specific projects?
I was not.
Or would you prefer to wait? Okay, you prefer to wait for, for someone from, whether it's Ms. Gillespie or someone from CPC to come in and discuss that, fine. Article twenty-nine, acceptance of Cosland and Washington Street, which you just approved to lay out this evening. Article thirty, the zoning bylaw amending the appeal process. This was something the board had asked, which essentially, um, asked council to prepare something which essentially takes the, um, appeal of planning board decisions out of the hands of the zoning board, um, of appeals so that you're not having, you know, a town board handling the appeal of another town board. Council has, has, uh, said that that's, um, kind of an anomaly, you know, in, in Massachusetts. He is going to planning to speak on that issue. I don't have the date, um, for the hearing in March. I believe I already, I, I emailed that to you as to when that would be held. And, um, I think it would be good to have council come in and, and speak to that issue before this board as well. Uh, article thirty-one, uh, it's a bylaw change motion to reconsider vote. Um, we did, we have had some issues the past couple of years with those at town meeting. And, um, based on, you know, trying to figure out, well, did you have to be on the winning side? Did you have to, you know, we have to wait in order to do this? There were some questions, some, uh, concerns, and I think that, um, uh, this is an attempt, a council's attempt on your behalf to try and, and, um, codify, you know, how we're supposed to do these things so that it, it gets rid of some of those gray areas. Again, if you'd like to wait until council comes in to speak to that. We can do that. Article thirty-two, uh, bylaw presented by advisory committee, um, to, um, uh, basically prepare a consent agenda for town meeting warrant, moderator's discretion. Um, handling some of these, as we've talked about, these administrative articles, these annual articles that we do, you know, borrowing authorization, contracts in excess of three years, will allow, um, uh, the moderator to do somewhat what the selectmen do with your consent agenda and, and get rid of those articles all in one vote. Again, you know, it's the moderator's discretion on how that would work. Um, advisory asked for this to bring forward. I think that it, you know, it has, um, it has some potential. I don't think it can hurt. But it's up to the board.
Wouldn't mind hearing from council on that. I mean, if he's going to come in anyway. I mean, it seems to make sense to me. My only concern is, could there be that, um, issue where, hey, someone, there, a group really wanted to hold, you know, a particular one for some reason, maybe acceptance of pilot payments. They didn't want, they didn't like that, um, you know, we just merely accept. They wanted something more aggressive.
But you do that on your consent agenda now. You say, so members, we've got these items.
I know, but if we did them all as a group.
One, two, and three, and I want to vote these and that. And Ms. Bracchio says, well, look, I'd like to hold item two. He said, fine, we'll vote one and three. Fine, we're voting one and three, all set. Now we go back.
I thought the town moderator would be doing this all at one, it'd be, but the moderator would name them all. And then if anyone, any, if there's a majority that wants something held, they have to have a vote for that first.
Right.
To hold something and then do the vote for all of them. So it'd be two votes.
So I, I, I believe, yeah, this, so Mr. Stivers is the architect of this that was brought.
Mr. Architect, welcome.
He is here this evening.
Yes, Sam Stivers, Advisory Committee. Um, the thought was, just like the selectmen work at, any one voter, just like the budget in terms of budget items at town meeting, any one voter can raise their hand and say, I want to hold that particular one. So it may expedite if people understand those, but if anybody has any concerns, any one individual voter can hold their hand up and say, I want to do that one separately.
Okay, so it would only take one?
One, that's correct.
Interesting, okay.
So, that was the intent. Thanks.
I mean, I, I think it could expedite our long town meetings.
I agree.
So.
I agree.
I'm supportive. Anyone else not supportive? All right, seeing a yes on that one.
Uh, so the last article, article thirty-three, establishing a regional school stabilization fund. This came from the superintendent on behalf of the school committee, um, in their discussions with their rating agencies, um, similar to discussions that, um, the finance team here has had with our rating agencies and when we set up our OPEB trust, uh, fund to at least recognize our deficit. The, um, bonding agencies are, are telling the schools, you know, that they need to set up a, a stabilization fund, in order to, um, uh, you know, recognize, I think, the, the, the funding of their long-term capital needs. They have no intention at this point of putting any money into it. There is no funding strategy for it at this point. It is simply establishing the fund, um, similar to, um, the way that we established, like I said, the OPEB trust fund a number of years ago. And so that, that is something that's being requested by the school committee.
Makes sense to me. All right. All right.
Okay, so from, thank you. So from what I see, from what you have open, I think that you would like to schedule CPC to come in and present to you. You already have recreation coming in and presenting to you. We could come back, Mr. Ballantyne will come back with a detailed PowerPoint presentation on Zero Kimberly Lane, complete with multi-vues of the parcels.
So if I could just add to that, I found where it is.
Color, yeah.
So when you get information on that, it looks like there's actually two parcels there.
So where is it? Don't keep us all in suspense.
Yeah, it's behind Woodbury, runs off of Heather Lane. It looks like it's not a real street.
So not Stubtoe, not off Stubtoe?
No.
What the heck?
But it looks like there's two parcels, same owner, same value, both equally as useful. So they're both open space. So I would just be curious which one it is and what the deal is with the other one.
Yeah. Great, Brian, thank you.
So other than, other than having CPC, Recreation Commission is coming in, additional information on Kimberly, and council, is there anything else that you feel that you need to see in order to finish your recommendations?
Salary administration plan.
I'm sorry, yes, and personnel board. I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
Not hearing anything additional, Mr. Purple.
Okay.
And deleted, excuse me, I, maybe you said it, Mark, but I wasn't listening.
That's okay.
We deleted thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I will schedule, I'll work with the chair to schedule those. I know that, I, I think we can probably get at least a couple of them, if not all of them taken care of at the next meeting, but we'll work, we'll work on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Reports, chairman's report. I'd like to yield my time to Selectman Braccio. Ma'am.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, as well as any public that may be sitting here or listening at home, sometimes with, with everything that goes on in town, we don't necessarily hear of the good things that go on behind the scenes. And I was certainly privy to that, and I would just like to share it with the board. Earlier in the week, last week maybe, I had seen a video of a young girl who's twelve years old from Alabama, and she's battling leukemia. She can't go to school because she is so sick with her immunities and everything. And her father is a firefighter and her mother's an EMT. And she put out a call for patches from police departments. As I further watched the video, the reason they were looking for these patches was her mom wants to make this once she survived this and moved on. They wanted this to be a positive experience for her, so they're putting all of these patches, they're making a quilt, something that she can carry on through her life to have a very positive feedback and outcome from something so horrendous that her family's going through. I reached out to the fire department, and Lieutenant Espezi worked with the fire department. They sent an unbelievable letter to this young girl. It was written to this young girl. She received a patch and a T-shirt from our fire department. So I know the chief is here. I would just like to say kudos to you and your department, that not only do you help people here in town, this is a wonderful thing behind the scenes, that we can all take a step back from all of the daily things that go on, politics aside, everything else aside, this is just a really great thing, and I'm so proud that our town would want to participate in bringing some hope to this family and to this little girl. So chief, thank you. Please share your thanks with your department as well. The letter was truly heartfelt, and I just thought that people should know that there are good things going on in this town. Thank you.
A lot of great things going on in this town, and that's a prime example. Well-stated. Thank you for that.
Mr. Purple? Mr. Chairman, there's only one item I want to bring to your attention. I know that Ms. Hale sent something out earlier. The Mass Municipal Association is having their 2018 spring legislative breakfast meetings. These are a great time to hear from MMA staff, as well as meet with your, the local legislature, legislators, and talk about some of the issues. Let them know what's important to you, the things that you're looking to see, whether it's Chapter ninety funding, whether we want minimum, you know, minimum funding for, for Chapter seventy, fully funded charter school reimbursement, yeah, all of these great things that, you know, that, that would help us, you know, in terms of our budget. We happen to have one which is fairly close to us in Hudson at, at the town hall on March ninth. They are around the state, but that is the closest one. They usually begin right around eight o'clock, try and end by ten. They know people have places to go and things to do, so it's a great opportunity to go, get a, get a quick sense of the, of the issues and obviously let the, let your legislators know. Usually Carolyn Liddick, you know, does, does come to these and Senator Eldridge as well, or they will send their aides. So if you're able to go, please let Ms. Hale know. She'll get you signed up, and it's a, it's a, it's a good, it's a good thing to go to, not a lot of time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Purple. All right, consent agenda items, only four today. I don't have any that I would like to hold. Anyone in particular know? I would move that we approve consent agenda items one through four. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a renaming of the Saint Marks Golf Course. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet a memo from, from the Selectman's Office. I will say that all of the staff, Ms. Esposito, Ms. Ostrich, and, and Ms. Hale, helped to compile all of the suggestions. We did get, as you can see, quite a few suggestions. Some of them seem to be a little more personal in nature. There was also some information included in your packet because the board did express an interest that, from Mr. Pilecki, that he wanted to provide you that information regarding the historical understanding of the name and what the course, you know, used to go by. So I give you the list, the memo in your packet. You have about a dozen names. There is only, most of them were one, one-offs, and there was a, there was an additional request that came in, I believe, after the packet was closed for South Borough Golf and Recreation Club, which was something just a little bit different, which could be added to the course, added to the, added to the list of names. So I don't know whether you want me to list all of the names?
No, I, oh, well, they're in our packet. Any, any thoughts, I mean, I, I know we're, you know, I appreciate the work that the, that the golf course committee has done on this. I think that the, I love the historical concept of renaming it the South Borough, South Borough Golf Club, and I think that's, you know, kind of historical significance would be, it's got a good ring to it. I think the golf committee is supportive of it, as am I. Other thoughts, questions?
There was correspondence, too, that the management company was in favor of that.
That's a great point, which is key. They're the ones who are going to market this, and, you know, we want to ensure that it's a success, so. Any other thoughts, questions? I would, I'll make a motion, we need a vote on this. I trust that we move to entitle the course, the South Borough Golf Club. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion?
As far as the name, the naming goes, the town of South Borough. The town of South Borough holds that name.
That is correct.
That's correct.
All right.
Yes.
We'll follow it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you to the golf course committee for all of their work on that. I think it's been an outstanding effort and, and I'm happy that we're moving forward while also looking back at the history of that, of that property and retaining and bringing back a name of great historical significance. Public comment? Anyone, public comment? All right. Sir?
Timlet, 148 Woodland wrote, "Back in the fall, we put a great big flashing banner on the town website soliciting volunteers and help and stuff. We heard earlier in this meeting that a number of committees aren't getting, the attention they deserve, aren't getting the volunteers they need. That banner still reflects the state of affairs back in the fall. It's soliciting for the municipal technology committee. It doesn't list the priorities like Shop C and the other things committees that don't have a quorum and can't meet. I've tried informally a couple of times in the past month to get that updated, and somehow, I don't understand why, it hasn't been able to be fixed. But I think, you know, if we want to get people to volunteer, we should at least have a list on the website of what we're really asking for."
All right, thank you, sir. Any other, Mr. Purple, you got that?
Absolutely.
Any other?
Just to add to that, when we did the interviews for the MTC, which had, you know, a dozen applicants for the five spots, most of them said that they heard about it at the town meeting and then applied. So maybe if we could make it as part of the announcements or something in the beginning of the two or three committees that really need help, maybe that's a good audience to get the applications.
Do you mean the town meeting or the Selectman's meeting?
No, the annual town meeting. They said that they applied because.
So six or eight months later, they, okay, all right.
That's what at least half the applicants.
Sure.
Like why they said they applied was because they heard about it at the annual meeting when it was raised.
And then I think maybe that there, it may be something that the board wants to consider about one of you making under, under Article One, hearing reports and everything and that, and just giving a quick update, you know, that here are these, you know, these are some important committees that we have that either can't meet or understaffed, and, you know, consider volunteering for these committees and just here's a little, we can put together some blurbs, here's what they do.
Yeah.
Can I take it one step further?
Yeah, I think Lisa should do that.
Sure, absolutely. Can we also, you know, people grab every handout that's on the table at town meeting. Maybe we could just put a handout that has the listing of the committees, and then as you speak to it, people can look down. It, it's a visual thing.
Sure.
And, and it does, it does tend to make a difference to a lot of people, so, and people take the packets home and then they go through it as well. Maybe it will help, maybe it won't.
You could put that information up on, whoops, I'm sorry, up on the screen behind you, you know, when we're doing that as well, so we can.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
But could we do it even sooner by posting the list at each building?
Yes.
That's a good idea. At the senior center of recreation, have them put it on their doors. There's a lot of people going in and out.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure that the banner is changed to reflect those positions that need to be. It's kind of a little bit, when we, when we did the virtual town hall website, we did the additional package for the clerk's office that allows them to, to maintain and keep updated the committee memberships and everything and that. So they're the ones that kind of drive when the vacancies and everything. So we'll work with their office. As you may or may not be aware, we've had various stages of flu and stuff running through this building, you know, but it's keeping some of the people away. But, and, and his office has been hit kind of hard, so we will, we will get to that, you know, as, as soon as health returns.
All right, thank you, Mr. Purple. Anything further? You have a comment? Seeing none, I'm looking. Yes, ma'am?
On March sixth, could we call an affordable housing trust fund committee meeting at six-twenty, just to approve minutes?
Sure.
It's the only discussion.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Were you meeting at six-thirty? Was that your plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
There is. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.